... as a pledge of allegiance.
... for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll do a roll call. We'll start with Everett.
Everett Clark.
Brittany Pelletier.
Kristy Heickel.
And Jason Henry.
Jay Fitzpatrick.
Pam McLeod.
Eunice Landry.
Tim Broderick.
Heidi Duford.
Eli Citrole.
Karen Curry-Tonoff.
Lila Atkins.
Peter Levitt.
Kelly Morris.
And I will now open up the first public input. And seeing none, I will now close it. Agenda review.
I'd like to move that we change the gummington options committee report to non-public under a number somebody else came up with, I hope.
Under 91-A:32K.
32K?
Yes. And we need a non-public for personnel, which is 91A32C.
Yes.
Anything else on the agenda? All those in favor?
Make a motion except the agenda is...
That would be a good idea. I know I'm trying to move this law.
Records are made to be broken, right, Eunice?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th or 19th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Upstaying.
Upstaying.
Okay, we're now up to the board superintendent principal and student rep communications. And I believe, Jay, you had somebody to introduce her?
Yes, I'd like to introduce this year's student rep to the school board. This is senior Kelly Barnes. Kelly is one of our high-performing students here. She's involved in a lot of co-curricular. If you've ever frequented any of our drama productions, you may recognize her on the stage. She's part of our advanced acting group, historian of the acting club. She's also president of world cultures or world language club, as well as this year's president of student council. So, welcome, Kelly.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So, today I'm going to talk to you a bit about the achievements and endeavors of some of the clubs and activities that have been going along in Prospect. Starting off with the sports, soccer has recently kicked off with the varsity boys and girls teams, as well as junior varsity, and have gone off to a very good start with varsity girls, taking the victory 4-1 against St. Thomas Aquinas High School. Unified soccer is also starting soon, so we can look forward to that. Cross-country has began their practice, and as you probably heard coming in, girls volleyball is starting as well. As far as clubs go, student council is planning our fall festival, which is our version of a homecoming dance and will be sort of our back-to-school introduction and first event to really unify the classes together. World Cultures Club is actually working with student council this year to add another dance into our repertoire, a cultural dance in which we will be learning more about the French and Spanish cultures and hopefully bringing those to the rest of the school. In addition, we have another event coming up, a back-to-school night, is the 26th of this month, where we will introduce the classes to their classes and the parents. On a personal note, I have noticed great enthusiasm and initiative from the student body at Prospect and believe it will be a wonderful year this year. I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you very much. You think you're up?
My turn?
Yes.
In your packets, I provide an outline of my report for this evening. We started the year, I had predicted to some of you that we expected 460 students on the first day of school. We had 459.
Could you do a little better?
I wanted to leave room for improvement in the future. It's my first time around. I included the second item, and I'll go through these quickly and answer any questions you have. In the future, maybe I'll bring a PowerPoint, but I'm trying to take baby steps here. I included the second item here because I think that, based on what I've learned about your principal, Mr. Fitzpatrick, there's no chance he would have talked about this, and he and the rest of the administrative team deserve kudos and recognition for the work they did preparing for opening days here. As you all know, and I acknowledge I wasn't here, so I don't really know the way you do, this community experienced a tragedy last spring, and coming back into the school year, it's not like other years. It's different. And I watched Jay and his team meet with Ann Duckless and Kelly Gasp. Ann, I had heard of Ann before I came to work in New Hampshire. She's that well-regarded. And I worked closely with folks in Massachusetts in the Mass Coalition for Suicide Prevention. And when I told some of my friends there that I was coming to work in New Hampshire, they told me about Ann. She and Kelly spent two full days here, meeting with Jay and his team and everybody from the counseling office, and they developed their plans around the opening days for teachers, the opening days for kids, but also how to provide supports for the entire community going into the school year. The second opening day faculty had been given an assignment by Jay to work on overnight, then assembled them into pairs, and they did a lot of work on how they were going to have ongoing communication to support each other as they encountered whatever might happen in this very important time. I just wanted to recognize that because it was the right thing to do, it was important work, and it appears, at least to me from where I sit, that they did a tremendous job. So, good job. You voted last June, I believe, to appropriate money to change over our financial accounting software to a system called Infinite Visions. I'm happy to tell you that we are on track with that implementation. It's a lot of work. I think one of the two town districts did this same thing recently, so you may have heard. It's a lot of work, but we're on schedule. We are hosting the data here ourselves, which allows us to meet the state's requirements for data security. We look to go live in January. That's the plan, so far, so good. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you is, and because of the new law, if you read the technology guide that you also approved a draft of back, I think it was June 4th, there's a piece in there about how teachers get approval to use software in their classrooms with students. We have a new legal requirement in New Hampshire to protect students' personal data regardless of what software tools we're using. So, when a teacher starts using a tool in the classroom and students have to sign up and share email addresses and names and birth dates and things like that, we need to know that either that information's not actually being collected, or if it is, that that vendor has agreed to keep that information private according to the law. We've contracted with a company called the Education Cooperative, who in turn has contracted with the New Hampshire CTO Council, which we're a member, to do this for us. So, in July, I looked at the districts, I'm sorry, I looked at the JMA's list of software that teachers had told us they were interested in using. There were 238 entries, I think, on that list. I could be off by one. And we had read the data privacy agreements and made decisions about whether or not those tools could be used for eight or 10 of them so far. It's extremely time-consuming. So, what the Education Cooperative does is they do that work for us. And they don't just do it for us, they do it for every, virtually every, as schools and school districts are joining, they're doing it for a big group. So, there's a lot of leverage there, and it makes it much more efficient. So, when I wrote this for your packet, we had 20 agreements done. There have been a few more trickling in, and we're not doing it, which is wonderful. They also maintain an online database that teachers can check. So, even if we haven't submitted a request to use a certain kind of software and make sure that it complies with the law, if another district in New Hampshire is already using it and it has been approved, we can tell the teacher, "Look, there's a good chance here. Go ahead. We'll put in our request also." I sign these agreements on behalf of Prospect Mountain. So, it's been, we're at the beginning, we've been doing it for a few weeks, but it's been a nice step. And it's saved our IT folks a little bit of time-consuming work. Probably the two more important things to me that I wanted to talk about are capital planning and then my entry in strategic planning. So, first, under capital planning, this is something I've done in the past that I think is really important for a school district, and in just about a minute, you're going to hear me say, "I'm trying not to run around with a bunch of new initiatives," but what I'm talking about right here is something new that I do want to run with because it takes several months to do it. And if you're going to use a five- or 10-year capital plan for budgeting purposes, it really needs to be completed, you know, the year before. So, not for the fiscal '20 budget necessarily, but for the fiscal, I'm sorry, not for the fiscal '21 budget, which is the one we're about to develop, but for the '22 budget, we really need to have this work done, and that means doing it now. So, it's something that Heidi and Andy and I have already started. We spent a few hours walking the campus and looking at all of our systems, all of our facilities. This place is in really good shape overall, which is heartening. So, I'll bring you more about this. We do want to solicit input from all employees. I sort of have a template and a system for doing this, so we'll send an email out by the beginning of October and get the ball rolling. And then, I put, present to subcommittees in December, and then I realized that finance and building and grounds meet, are scheduled to meet, in November and January, so we may have to take a look at that part. But other than that, this is, I'll be bringing more to you on this topic. But what you end up with is a specific five-year plan with the dollars attached, so that you can predictably talk to constituents and taxpayers about how much capital investment needs to cost here or should cost here over a good, pretty long period of time. Then from year six to 10, it's a little more, "Well, we know we're going to need something," whether it's hot water heaters or whatever those things may be, "but we're not quite as specific beyond the fifth year of the plan." A really good five-year capital plan, I mean, I've had one that I was able to go to a town, tell them what their projected assessment was for the next three years, and then each of the following years go back and say, "The number I gave you last year, that's the number. The number I gave you two years ago, that's the number." So, I want to do this because it'll put you in a position to have those conversations with your towns, if that's what you choose to do. And then the final thing I have for you tonight is about my entry process, which is a little different from what they teach you to do in superintendent school. And the reason for that is exactly something I mentioned earlier. It's what, the most important thing that's happening here, the most important thing that's happening at Prospect Mountain this fall is everyone's coming to school, and it's safe and supportive, and everyone's getting what they need to carry on after collectively sharing a tragedy. In my opinion, it's not the time for a new leader to come in and start making waves and noise, so I'm not. You've all met with me personally. I'm continuing to have some personal meetings. I will give you my entry report a month from now, at which I will kind of summarize what I think I see here, some of the strengths and maybe some areas for improvement that I see in the place, but then, not now, I'll start what you might consider a more traditional strategic plan. One of the reasons I think this works here is as I've started to read documents that already exist here, many, many, many of the elements of a strategic plan exist and have been developed just within the last couple of years. So, they are timely and usable. It doesn't all need to be redone, but I do think that it makes sense for me going into my fourth, fifth, sixth months on the job to bring people together to talk about those things and then to bring you a strategic plan based on all that. So, that was the quickest summary I could give you. Sorry if it was too long, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right, clear up.
The opening of school went well. Prior to that, Thursday prior, in the morning time, I met with new teachers. There were only two this year. We went through the new teacher orientation, which is what I do every year with any new staff. That evening, I hosted the parent information night for new students. We had approximately 75 attendees, and we think somewhere in the ballpark, about 32 families that were represented, which is not bad considering there's a healthy portion of students that are here as freshmen who have upperclassmen siblings who are here, so a lot of parents who, you know, they get it. So, it was a good turnout. I felt like it was, by and large, a good conversation, although I did most of the talking, did give folks the opportunity to ask questions. Some of the most, I find interesting components of that night is, this year, there seemed to be a lot of eyes opening wide and a lot of head nodding around vaping and electronic cigarettes and what have you, and all of the various ways and mechanisms that kids are using nowadays. So, did have a little bit of conversation with parents about that and things, strategies that they can use to help, or things to be on the lookout for. We then had freshman orientation day on the first day of school. They were, the students were here by themselves. This is something that we've traditionally done. It's what I consider phase four of that transition process. Students seemed very nervous in the morning time when they first got here. By the afternoon time, it seems like they, by a show of hands, many of them felt much, much better about coming to high school. And it makes sense after you get to experience the building and go through some of the things that you may be fearful of, whether it's lockers or finding classrooms, meeting your teachers, going through the cafeteria. But they did a great job working as a collective body. They were attentive and looking forward to how they do this year. Thursday was our first day of having everybody here. We started off the day with a school assembly, and today was day two, and everything seems to be running as it should. The mission this year, the theme that we're, you know, highly promoting is really a year to promote healing, making sure that people are feeling healthy and happy. So, we're moving forward. So, unless anyone has any other specific questions, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to building and grounds committee report.
Can I come forward on that? Buildings and grounds met. Last time we met, we talked about encumbering funds to do drainage on the outfield of the softball field and the baseball field, along with the JV soccer field. As we know, there's a lot of moisture here in the springtime that forces teams, our teams, to actually have to play elsewhere or not have home games because it's just saturated on those fields. So, that being said, went out to bid, we got three bids back. They are in your packet, there's a letter in there to quote Andy. I don't know if some of these guys actually wanted the job, given the price that's there, but we, Buildings and Grounds wants to bring forward for a full vote, we are recommending Alton excavation in the amount of $72,900 to complete the drainage. It's basically French drains in those spots that I mentioned, and that would be completed by snowfall anyway before ground freezes, so that it would be in place and ready for this coming spring.
Make a motion to accept $72,900 for Alton excavation to put the drainage in the fields.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it.
And we move the next committee report to non-public. We have an early graduation request.
So, Kylie started this process last year, and as you've read here, she has her plan of what she, I'm sorry, what you have here is a letter from the mother supporting Kylie's interest. Kylie approached counseling office and administration last year and initiated this process, made sure she took whatever classes she needed to take last year to set herself up this year to be able to graduate early. So, this is the scenario, unless you have any specific questions. I mean, she's met all of her requirements, she's followed the process of, that's outlined in the policy as well. I would recommend approving.
I move that we accept early graduation for Kylie, with regard.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You okay?
Yeah, my discussion is more about this process. I think, you know, we have a policy that outlines a very specific process, but what we're finding is that many students are completing their high school requirements, and they're setting themselves up to be done by the midpoint of senior year. And we can certainly have those folks follow this process and bring names to you. My perspective on this one is that I think it puts additional stresses and work on you all and on the families, that we're asking them to jump through this hoop that's beyond us. They've met their graduation requirements. Even if you were to say, "No, you can't graduate early," they're still going to get a diploma from us, they're just not going to come to school for the second half of the year. So, I think it's just something in the future that maybe policy wants to reevaluate to see if it's a way to streamline it. Nobody's going to request to graduate early who's not meeting the requirements, so, just FYI.
It might be good to look and see what other policies look like across the state.
Yeah, because if anything, I would rather, well, just speaking in general terms, my own opinion, I'd rather see a senior take advantage of some of the electives and stay in school.
Yeah, and we certainly have that conversation when we vet this out. But it's a tough selling point to say, "Hey, Jason, you know, the electives that we have offered during the times in which you're free are very specific, a chorus class or an art class in which some kids go. Not interested."
How many students are we talking about that meet this retirement?
I think this year, we're probably going to see about three more prior to the mid-year, which doesn't seem like a lot, but for our population, it's a decent size.
So, policy subcommittee would be scheduled to meet regularly a month from now. Anyway, we have two other agenda items already for that meeting. We'll add this.
Good.
Jay, we can work together to do some research in advance of that meeting.
That sounds great.
Okay, the investment policy.
This is just coming forward to be reviewed annually as it states. There's no changes from this.
So, you want to...
We just need about, yeah, to continue the policy.
So...
I'll make a motion to continue the investment policy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a disposal item.
There's two ideas.
Computer desks?
The, um...
How many desks?
The, um...
I'm starting over.
Computer desks, or 21 computer desks. I thought it wasn't there. I thought I remember seeing it, but I was wrong. 21 computer desks that, since we're in Chromebook phase now, all four grade levels have Chromebooks. We've actually dismantled one of our former computer rooms and turned it into another learning lab, but we have these stationary desks that, I mean, they're good desks, they're in good shape. We don't have a use for them, we don't foresee a use for them. So, whatever you'd like to do.
I'll take one.
We haven't done, we haven't done anything yet. The first step was to get your approval to get rid of them, and once you say yes, then we'll, what we typically do is we contact both elementary schools and say, "Do you want them? Yes or no? If yes, they go. If no, we then see if anybody else, meaning any other schools or businesses around, who want them." So, but step one is you guys, you all saying.
Make a motion to dispose of the computer desks, just as you stated.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, clarification here. In the event that we're unable to give them away to any school-related, should we make an attempt to sell them?
Try.
I think you'll probably find a home for them without, but if, yeah, sell them or I just hate to see them go into a landfill. That's where I don't want to see them.
They're offering to students and staff.
We can, we can do whatever you want us to do.
Give them away to a nice...
Give them away to a nice home, I shall. Do my best.
I mean, I'd rather see them go free to a student in need of one for their room at home than them to end up in a landfill, as I'm making it sound.
Yeah, no, we can, so if your practice here has been to offer to the two, sending K through eight systems, that makes sense, and then it could be put out statewide. I have had the experience, sort of the last resort scenario, as you do a public bid in reverse and take him sealed. Essentially, it's a sealed auction. Can do it if you have to.
I got some desks in here.
It's a lot of work to get rid of stuff. All right. I move that we accept the resignation of Garian Harden. I move that we accept the nomination of, oh, sorry.
Any discussion on the resignation?
I have two more to add.
And also, we do them in big groups.
Today. They just came in after we posted.
No, that's fine.
I'll speak loudly enough for one of the microphones to catch me. So, these came into the SEU office after the, after the packets were posted, so these are informations and appointments.
Did we vote on that?
Can you give me two copies?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move we accept the nomination of Amy Gardner, paraprofessional.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we accept the nomination of Emily Barrett, paraprofessional.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we accept the nomination of Kim Whittier, paraprofessional.
Second.
And I move we accept the nomination of Crystal Vernosero, JV volleyball coach.
Any discussion?
Please, hold on for a moment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm just curious, because we have a girls' soccer assistant coach, and then we also have an assistant. Is that normal?
Yeah, no, no, it's not normal. So, a unique thing happened this year with the girls' program. It started with us not being able to find the JV coach. Preseason started, still was not able to find the JV coach. We then met as a board, approved having an assistant to the varsity. Had a couple of folks express interest. Did the best I could to try to convince them to take over the varsity, or junior varsity. Neither of them were interested in just doing junior varsity, wanted to have their hands in everything. Then triads came around, and we only had, I want to say, 27 girls in the entire program. So, the varsity coach kept 18, left over nine on the JV program. So, for the first time in Prospect's, Prospect history, we actually have to play games back-to-back so that some of... so that some of our varsity players can swing down and play JV games as well, something a lot of schools are going through this year, they just don't have enough players. So felt that it would be better to have, since we still didn't have a JV coach, that we give the varsity coach two assistants, and between the three of them, they're covering the varsity and JV program.
Makes sense. Okay, so I need a motion to go into non-public to discuss the Gilington Options Committee report.
Make a motion to go non-public under ninety-one A colon three-two K.
Second.
Peter?
Peter? Oh, yes.
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 We are now in non-public.